Welcome and good evening to the January 28th Planning Commission meeting. Jackie, if you could please take the roll call.
Here.
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 Here. So, the first order of business is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or deletions tonight to the meeting agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Meeting agenda is approved. Next item up is approval of the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda tonight is the meeting minutes for the January 14th meeting, and Jackie, I believe you sent these out by email last week.
Early conversion was in the packet.
Was in the packet, too? Okay, just some by email. Are there any additions or deletions to this? Commissioner Shear.
Jackie, this is just petty, but under the approval of meeting agenda, it states, "Acting Chair Plaiditor amended the agenda to include the election of planning commissioners." I think it's planning commission officers?
It is.
Okay.
That might be the vibes.
Oh, all right. I'm looking at the one that was in the packet. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other changes? Hearing none, I'd make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is where citizens are allowed to come in, speak for three minutes on a topic. The only question we'd ask is if they'd not speak on a topic that comes up later in the agenda. Are there any people that wish to come forth and speak tonight? Maybe later? One of these. Hearing or seeing none, I'd take a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Community comment is closed. Next up are public hearings. There's two tonight. Variance for Brian Anita Erickson and a lot division for Donae Holmes. Carrie, if you could take us through it, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, this first variance request is located at 6617 Brittany Road. Property is located middle of a single-family residential neighborhood about mid-block. Aerial view of the existing homes. There's a look at the existing home. It's this one right here. Another view. The applicant here is proposing to remodel that existing home and build a second-story addition. And a variance is required. Again, here's the existing home. Adjacent home to the south, notice that the closest portion of that structure to the south is a garage. So here's a look at the proposed addition or the remodeling in addition to the home. As you see, it would be a second story, front elevation and the back. Commissioner Forrest, before the meeting, raised an issue about the height of the building. Just taking a quick scale to it, it appears it may be slightly over 30 feet, which is the code requirement. We're not sure exactly where the existing grade ran through there. So if this is approved, we might suggest that you add a condition that the height requirement is met with this project. There are also two additions to the home, a little front porch and an addition off the back. Those are code compliant, no variances needed for those additions. The portion that needs the variance is, and we'll see a slide in a minute, but it's the south elevation or the south side of the home. This is a rendering that the applicant's provided that shows the homes on either side and the existing home in the middle. And the rendering on the bottom shows the new home in relation to the adjacent home. So again, the variance is on this side of the home, and there is a garage located closest to that addition. The request before you is a side yard setback variance from 13 and 1/2 feet to 9.4 feet for the second-story addition. This is about an 80-foot wide lot. The side yard setback requirement is 10 feet. And as the commission is familiar with the side yard setback, the second story needs to step in if it's taller than 15 feet, 6 inches for every foot above 15 feet. So based on the height, a 13 and 1/2-foot setback is required for that second story. The existing structure at 9.4 is actually non-conforming because of that 10-foot setback that is required. So the existing structure is non-conforming. So this is a look at the required setbacks, the red dashed line here. That's the 13-foot setback on the second story. So it's this portion of the home that requires a setback variance. So it's kind of a point intrusion into the setback. It's not the entire wall. You note that the homes are built slightly askew to the lot line. The lot line comes through separating the two homes, and so both the home on either side here can have set askew to the existing lot line.
So that piece, Carrie, already, if you go back for a second, that already is in the setback, correct?
Yes.
And that's not expanding further into the setback?
That's correct. The addition just goes above what's there now. So the required setback for the first level is 10 feet. So that line, you know, comes through roughly in this location here. So it's just a slight non-conformity on that first level. So with that, staff believes that the request here is reasonable and that the variances are justified. The additions are reasonable. Again, they're remodeling and expanding the home. It's somewhat similar to the requests that were reviewed at your last meeting on Nancy, Nancy Avenue, where they were popping the top, and the existing home was non-conforming in regard to the setback. The footprint, again, the expansions are conforming off the back and the porch in the front. Again, it's a point intrusion into the setback, so only a portion of that side is within the required setback. The separation between the two homes here is 20 feet 8 inches. Again, that remains with the proposed addition. Also want to highlight, let's see, this is a good graphic. The applicant is proposing a rain garden in the rear yard here to help the existing runoff. There's not a lot of grading that's gonna, that needs to take place here to accompany just the additions here off the back and the front. Engineering department has reviewed that grading and drainage plan and found that it would be an improvement in the neighborhood. So with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions outlined, and I might recommend that you add that condition about the 30-foot height requirement. Practical difficulties here would be the existing location of the structure and how the existing home is angled to that side lot line. With that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Questions for Carrie? Mr. Olson?
So, we don't know what the exact height is and how much it is over 30 feet?
It's gonna be a matter of inches, it looks like. It's just depending on where that, the existing grade comes through. It wasn't clear as we just quickly looked at the plans before the meeting. I don't think it should be a problem, but they would have to meet that height requirement.
And just, so clarification, so the height that they're proposing is what's adding to the variance also, right? It's because we have to add, because of the height, they have to add additional side yard setback?
Let's see if I can show a graphic that might...
The setback increases.
Yeah, because of that, yeah.
It's actually, so the setback that we are looking at is right along here, and that's where the increase comes in. Where we're measuring to the height is the very top.
Sure, okay.
So it probably is not going to impact the setback variance that you're considering this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Have you received any comments from neighbors? Joining properties?
I have, we have not received any comments.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Carrie. Would the applicant like to say anything? If you could step up to one of the microphones and introduce yourselves and maybe to the side one here might be best.
It said Brian. I don't know, that was a typo. My name's actually Bjorn Erickson.
Okay.
And my wife Anita.
We'll fix that.
And I've spoken with all the neighbors, actually, and none of them have any issue with this. The immediate neighbors that own the house that is closest to this, where we need the variance, are, have looked at the plans extensively, are in favor of it, and are wishing me well tonight and wishing us luck. This height issue is new to me, so I'm a little hesitant to, I guess I'm a little unclear as to what that is, but hopefully that won't hinder receiving a variance for this. Like I said, I've spoken with all of our neighbors. They're all in favor of this. Nobody has any grievance with it. They're excited to have us in the neighborhood and to get going with this. So, that being said, I really can't say a whole lot more.
Great. Are there any questions for the applicant? Nope, doesn't look like it. Seeing this is a public hearing, right now it'll open up for any public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this, they have three minutes if you wish to speak, step to a microphone and speak.
Hi, my name is Jim Groetz. I live at 5513 Park Place. I have a question. Looking at this house, I don't see here on the side, as I'm looking at the front, looking at it into the west, I don't see how the side yard height is calculated. I don't see an average grade. Why I bring this up is we have a problem right now at our house in that somebody cheated on the gable. They're calling something a gable that is not a gable. It's the side of the house. And I don't see where those measurements are, and the code specifically says you have to take the average grade along the side. Well, I don't see, I don't see where that's on here. I don't see any window wells, so that wouldn't calculate in there, but I don't see that. And what has happened, and the reason I bring it up is that in our case, what's happened is somebody filed plans for window wells and ended up building lookout windows, and now the house is built over three feet too close to us. So I don't see these on here, and I just think it would be, and I'm not speaking for or against the variance, but I'm just saying, I think we have to have staff calculate this, and it's gotta be on there, because, you know, if it's not, it's gotta be checked. I realize this is a hip roof, right? But I just don't see in these diagrams, you know, the average elevation on the side, and I don't see the height here. And I just, I'm just hoping that people don't run into the problems we now have, because the city won't stop the construction. They're just gonna let them build, just like JMS, let them build. So I just think that, you know, as a matter of policy, it would be a good idea to put all that stuff on there. Again, I'm not speaking for or against this, but I just am looking at the drawings and notice, notice to me they're technically deficient, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So back up to commission, are there any comments or questions? I just want to, first up, Carrie, on the question that was just brought up on the average grade, I'm assuming you'll take a look back at that, go through that, and find out what that is, confirm what it is, along with the height calculation? Is that right?
We most certainly will double-check that. Exhibit A5 in your 11x17s can show that side, so the grade that was taken is the grade that's, as you see, it's pretty well flat along that sidewall. So that's where that measurement is taken. And I believe the height in that location was determined to be about 22 feet, and so that, 21 to 22 feet, and that's what brings in the requirement for that additional side yard setback. So it's, it's this, the setback has to step in 6 inches for every foot above 15 feet. And so, yeah, that would be 22 feet is the measured height along the side. So the additional seven foot above the 15-foot setback increases that setback on the second story.
And then in addition, the full height of the building, would that, we'll double-check on that, too?
Yes, yeah. And that's measured from the front, and that's taken from existing grade.
From the front, average, existing grade.
Correct.
And 30 feet's the maximum on that, in this case, right?
To the very top of the roof, correct.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest?
I think this illustrates what we had talked about when we were looking at our setbacks and our height limits, when we were redoing some of the zoning ordinances before, that we run into a little bit of a quandary with the, with the split entry and split-level homes, because sometimes the main entrance is on a different level than the main living level, and I can understand some confusion as far as calculating that from, is it the entrance level, the living level, or the ground level? And I think it's, but since right now it says take it from the average grade of the front, and we're going to the ridge height, which is a good thing.
Commissioner Carr?
I would support granting the variance and agree with the staff findings that the proposed development is reasonable, fears that the variance is justified, and there have been no complaints from any neighbors. They all support the proposal. I also think the plans are attractive and will add to the character of the neighborhood. So I would be in favor of granting this variance.
Was that a motion?
Well, I can make a motion, but I didn't know if anyone else has anything else.
Okay, maybe hold that for a second. Any other further comments? Commissioner Lee?
Well, until the height is clarified, I guess I'm a little reluctant to take a vote on this or approve it at this point. I guess I, I would like to have the full information in front of me. I think that sometimes we get a little carried away with conditions, and to me, it's about having all the full information right here to make the right decision. Because it appears to be quite high, I mean, in relation to the surrounding homes, I do realize that obviously we have a maximum limit they can go up to, but because of the split level, it is unclear to me exactly what that height is. And I don't want to have to get into sort of the business of adding up individual floor levels. So for me, I think it's lacking some information for me to be able to support it at this time.
Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, I think going forward, I also think it's a reasonable solution to what they're trying to accomplish. I would like to add in a condition that the rain garden is constructed as it's in the plans, because it's not, and I know that's a little bit of overkill, because it is part of the plans, but nonetheless, it's not a, always a common part of the projects that come before us. And since the engineer's report was based upon that, I'd like to see it constructed and maintained as well. And also maybe if, as we go forward, a condition that they meet the maximum height requirements of the code, or else we'll need another variance.
Any other comments? Commissioner Carr?
Well, I would move approval of the variance subject to the staff findings, and in addition, add a requirement that the final plan submitted have a 30-foot roof height. I'm not sure if that's the correct way to say it, but, and also that the rain garden shown on the plans also be constructed per the plan. Second?
We have a motions and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
It's just a minor detail, but can we say that the height satisfies the 30-foot height limit instead of a 30-foot height requirement? Basically, you said that it had to be 30 feet. They can make it under 30 feet, they just gotta make it more than 30.
Well, that it complies with code.
I would concur.
Motion second with a little change there. Having said that, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So I believe it passes seven to one. Is that correct? Thank you. Just check our heights and otherwise enjoy building. Next up is a lot division for Donae Holmes at 3621 and 3625 54th Street. Carrie, if you could go through that project?
Members of the commission, this next request is located at the intersection of Drew and 54th Street, just east of, east of France. Look at the site here, Drew runs north-south, 54th east-west. There is a couple of duplexes on this block. This map may be difficult to see, but the little X area that indicates R2 zoning district, where duplexes are allowed. There are two right next to each other on the corner, this one and the one right next door. There's an additional duplex down the street, and there's a few over on France Avenue. So it's kind of a scattering of, of single-family homes and duplexes. To the north is the city of Minneapolis, and those are primarily single-family homes as well. Here's a look at the existing duplex on the site today. Another look at the existing duplex. This row of shrubs here would, is to be, is to remain with the proposed, new duplex proposed on the site, with the exception of cutting a driveway and off of 54th. The home here to the east is also a duplex. So this is a rendering of what the structure would look like on the site. So this is Drew Avenue here, running north-south, the single-family home to the south, and then this would be the new home. So the existing duplex and the detached garage would be removed. Another rendering from 50, this is 54th, again, the duplex to the west, or excuse me, to the east, and the proposed new home. Another look from the corner. So there's a number of variances that are requested here. First, a side-street setback variance from 20 feet to 18 feet, and the rest are, have to do with the lot itself. The existing lot is substandard. For a duplex, we require at least 15,000 square feet. So in order to build on a non-conforming R2 lot, a variance is needed. The existing size of the property is 10,748 square feet. A lot width variance is also requested. The existing lot is just 80 feet wide, and our code requires 90 feet. They're also requesting a party wall division to separate the two homes. So this is a site plan that shows, the red arrow indicates the required setbacks, and this is the requested variance area, just this small area located right here. If the applicant, so as you see here, the one driveway would face Drew, and the other would face 54th. If the applicant were to relocate this driveway, so they both came off 54th, the proposed structure would meet all of our setback requirements. With a garage for a side-street, if the garage opening doesn't face the street, the required setback is 15 feet. If the garage opening faces the street, the requirement is 20 feet. Reason for that is so you can get a car parked in front of the garage, so it's not in the right-of-way. Allows for that extra space. So that's where the setback variance is requested. And then again, the other variances have to do with the existing conditions on the lot. There are a couple of trees that would need to be removed as a result of the plan. One would be within this driveway location here. There's a maple tree there, and a locust tree located right, this one down here? Maybe this is the maple that I was thinking that's to be removed. Yeah, there's a maple up, there's two trees that are going to be removed as a result of, of the new structure. The applicant is proposing to replace those trees with a couple of four-inch maples, one on each lot, so they would be these two located right here. Again, you can see the shrubs that would remain, and then they would provide that, cut that opening along 54th to get the driveway in. So with that, staff believes that this request is also reasonable and that the variance criteria is met. The lot width and the area, as I mentioned, are existing conditions. The small R2 lot is not uncommon with a lot of our duplexes in town. The character of the neighborhood would not be altered. There's an existing duplex there now, and they're proposing a duplex. Part of the rationale for the variance is to make it look like a single-family home on each side facing the street, to kind of blend in with the single-family homes across the street on each side. That's part of the reason here, to have it blend into the neighborhood. The applicant has submitted the grading and drainage plan. It's been reviewed by our engineering staff, and they feel that this plan will be an improvement over existing conditions. Again, they could relocate this garage opening to face the street. That would eliminate that need for the variance. Staff believes that that is a reasonable and a minor intrusion into the required setback. So with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. This one is a little bit different because of the lot division that's attached to it, so this is a recommendation. This will go to the city council when a variance is attached to a lot division like this. City council takes final action. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Carrie?
Right, Carrie. Okay, so in the engineer's comment, the memo, it just said engineering has only minor concerns, and I didn't really see what those were. I'm sure they're minor, but do you know what they might have been?
They do indicate that. In speaking with them, they didn't indicate any concerns to me. They, this is a better deal from existing conditions, so they were, they were okay with it.
Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, in the first photograph you showed the shrubbery, I don't, is it for certain that the shrubs that, between the house to the east, so not facing 54th Street, but it kind of turns out, yeah, those shrubs right there, are those to remain?
They are to remain. They may be doing some trimming there, but they are, they would, they would remain.
Okay, I didn't see that on the site plan, but they are, the intent is to leave a border there between that home and its neighbors.
Yes.
Okay, and did you...
Here's those shrubs.
Oh, I didn't see that one. Okay. And any correspondence from the neighbors?
I've not heard from any neighbors, no.
Okay. And can you explain just a little bit about this party wall variance? Obviously, currently, right now, there is no party wall per se.
Correct.
So, and it looks like the shape of the lot division is changing. Is that, is that correct? We're now showing the new, it's split right down the middle?
Right.
So it's going to be two separate lots?
Correct.
But isn't it currently two separate lots right now?
Currently, it's one lot with a double dwelling on it. So they'd like to do it in this fashion, so they, in creating this party wall, essentially a firewall that separates the two, they can sell each side.
Okay, so on the existing site plan, it's listed as Lot 6, Lot 7. It's two lots, but it's got one house on it, sort of straddling it.
The underlying plat may have been...
That might be an old plat.
May have been two lots.
Okay, okay, so this way, it can be owned by two different owners?
Correct.
And that party wall's going to sit right on the property line?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And just a comment, we've done this a fair amount of times on 48th Street, I think.
Forty, forty, yeah, the 49th there behind.
Forty-ninth Street in there with, I know a couple of times they've come back and asked to split it after it's even been done, I believe, right?
Right, yeah. Sometimes they've built the structure first and then come back for the, for the party wall division.
For the party wall division, okay. Any other questions for Planner Teague? Right, thanks, Carrie. How would... How would the applicant like to step forth and tell us about your project?
I would. Good evening. My name is Steve Benke with Donnie Homes. I wanted to thank you for your time. Basically, what we're doing here is we're creating a twin home where a duplex exists, and as a distinction, a twin home is more like a townhome. And as such, they're both few simple lots. The underlying plat division does not exist anymore, it's one tax parcel, so we're going back and re-subdividing it into two parcels. Each lot has its own, it's a few simple lots, so each one would be owned. And the building itself would be covered by covenants, so that the two owners would be bound to each other that way to maintain the exterior in a certain fashion. You wouldn't see one side painted one color, one side painted another color. We really felt that the idea of splitting the garages to the two different streets really helped the neighborhood, and because of that, we've, the staff brought up the issue of the additional setback. They have been generous with me at putting it at 18 feet. My scaling actually gets us at about 18.8 to the door itself. That basically is the length of a suburban, obviously you don't put a suburban uptight to the door, but that keeps that much vehicle off the right-of-way. The trees that we're planning on putting back in to replace the 12-inch maple that is now in the new driveway actually exceed the caliper inches of what's being removed. I did note that staff commented that the new structure is, at 31 feet, is actually four feet shorter than what we're allowed. Basically, the smaller lot has generated a smaller building. And, you know, what we try to do is we try to fit it in there. I passed out a number of brochures, just so you can get a look at the kind of things that we've been doing in the city of Edina for the last five years, six years. We have a number of other things on our website, basically remodeling, new construction, variety of home types and styles. We've been doing multifamily in the rest of the metro for decades, and what we're doing here is bringing a little bit of that to this part of our Edina. The only other real issue here that I wanted to talk a little bit about was that we are actually having to bring water to this lot. And that's the second reason why we are plating it. We do need utilities in across the back, so we can serve water from one unit to the other one. The water currently comes from Minneapolis, it's billed to Minneapolis, and because it's a single service, we cannot add another one to it. So we'll, at our expense, we're actually going to be bringing water from Fuller and Drew to this lot. So, otherwise, I'd be happy to stand for questions myself.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Forrest.
Yeah, when you talk about bringing water from Fuller and Drew, is that going to be a disruption to the neighbors to the south, then?
We expect it to be directionally bored. Directionally bored, they actually come in with the drill and go underneath.
Okay.
There is one neighbor whose fronts along Drew there, and the area of their driveway, they do also have a driveway that accesses onto Drew, and that area would be directionally bored for sure. Generally, what they do is they open a hole at each end, and then they connect it with the drill, and basically put the water underneath.
Okay. And I see the engineer's report talks about birmingham and stuff to protect that house as well?
Basically, if you're looking at the site plan, the southeast corner of the lot currently drains-
Carrie, if you want to bring that up for Jordan, might be easier to look at.
That one actually is fine, I can do it here. This corner, right down this area-
Oh, hang on for the microphone.
This corner of the lot, the southeast corner of the lot, actually drains to the south and east, and what we're doing is we're putting a berm right through here, so that the drainage continues along the back of the lot and out to Drew. So we're basically trying to interrupt what currently goes onto the neighbors' edge.
I know that there's no curb along that side-street either, so it's, I think we need to be cautious as far as the fact that if it goes out onto Drew, it isn't just going right into the neighbor's driveway there. So that's something I'd like to see some care taken in. I'm thinking, too, with the engineer's concerns, I don't believe there's any storm sewers on the north side there, on the Edina side of the street, and this is a downhill slope, so it's a challenge, I think, for handling sometimes stormwater and also snow melt. So I guess that's one thing, is just to be very aware and very cautious with the drainage patterns on the property.
Absolutely. The grade on the south end of the property is pretty flat, and I don't see a lot of velocity from the water due to the birmingham that we're doing. When I was reviewing the utilities in the area, I did think I saw a storm sewer on 54th a little bit east of us, and I think there is something down there that catches what comes off the lot from 54th, but we essentially aren't changing the front half of the lot at all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
I just wanted to confirm, what's the overall height, total height?
Thirty-one feet, thirty-one feet, and 35 is allowed.
Thirty-one feet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my elevations, in dealing with staff, I basically include on my front elevations all that data. I realize at this scale, those pages are very small, but if you do blow it up, I do have the total height, I do have the height of the 15, where the 15-foot is, and then the issue of the one, for every one foot higher of six inches, you'll see an angle on there that defines where that confines the building envelope.
And have you reviewed any of this with the neighbors, the plans?
Paul has actually scheduled his meeting with the neighbors for the demolition meeting, and outside of that, no.
But they would have been noticed for this, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. The other, Commissioner Forrest.
You know, we haven't addressed, there is an alternative solution to this as far as putting the driveways on the front, but personally, in my opinion, I like the two-fronts, the appearance of two-front elevations of the home, and it gives a little bit more independence and privacy, I think, to the owners, too. So I'm personally, I'm for doing it this way.
I would agree, it seemed to show at least a little bit of creativity versus the big driveway. Just looking at those, are those single-car or double-cars?
Those are both double-car garages.
Oh, they are? Okay, they just look a little, okay.
If you're looking at the perspective or the model that I showed on the lot, you are seeing it at an angle. The front elevation page, I believe it's eight, I think it's page 10 in your package here, actually does show the front and side.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 810.
Check that for Commissioner Shearer, so.
We are providing double garages. The one that faces 54th is oversized in depth, and the one that faces Drew, it's a more normal depth, but it has extra width for storage.
Gotcha. Anything else? Well, thank you, if anything comes up. Since this is a public hearing, feel free, anyone who wishes to talk about this, step forward to the microphones. Nobody out there? Okay. Seeing no one stepping forth, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Hearing's closed. Take it back up to the planning commission. Are there any additional comments on this? Seems like it's, similar ones have come in lately on this.
I'd move approval with staff recommendations.
There a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Carr.
I'm not sure if the staff recommendation would include this or not. I know that in point two of the staff recommendation, there's a notation that the locust trees be maintained to protect during construction, and that there, in point three, that they're required to plant maples, but there's no mention of the shrubs, and I'm just wondering if that should be added as part of our approval, that the shrubs be maintained as set forth on the plans, because that's not really part of the building construction and the variance. So I would recommend that the shrubs on both sides of the property be maintained to the extent, well, to the extent that they're currently existing, and I believe that a driveway may intersect through one side.
Is that acceptable to the-
Oh, there's-
Oh, Commissioner Lee.
You know, Commissioner Carr, I believe that Carrie pointed out that it actually did show up on their landscape plan, so it is part-
Is this?
Yeah. It's not in the big sheet, it's in the smaller sheet, so that's where I kind of missed it. So if it's on the landscape plan, I'm guessing it's subject to the plans as submitted, so we probably don't have to call that out, unless you're saying, you know, for a maintenance kind of, long-term maintenance kind of thing, but the existing shrubs right now are scheduled to remain.
So are the shrubs, well, two plans are mentioned. Plans dated December 24th and January 9th. So Planner Teague, I guess the question is, the shrubs, is the landscape plan part of those dated plans?
Yes, that was the one that was submitted January 9th.
Okay, then I'm fine. I would agree, we don't need to have an amendment.
Yes.
One thing I did mention to Carrie that's not in here is that we do plan on trimming them, just so that no one's scared when they do start getting trimmed a little bit. Thank you.
So with that, our motion is still as-is and seconded?
I can, I would like to make one additional comment. In these situations, I realize that the reason I'm focusing so much on the shrubs is because that east elevation is extensively long. It is similar to what it is now, however, it is 20 feet, I think, closer now to the lot line than the existing. So it's going to move significantly closer to 3517, I think that's the house number, the home to the east. It would be nice in these situations to have some feedback from the owner, the adjacent homeowner, that at least these things have been reviewed, or they're aware of it, but I think that's why I'm kind of focusing on sort of what that experience is going to be. Obviously, we're looking at a lot of proposals now, and the only way to, when you do a tear down, is essentially go up. So this is going to be a significant mass on the corner, in addition, significant length on the elevation in the east, north, north-south direction. So that elevation, although it's not seen, it's going to be experienced by that particular homeowner. However, I really cannot find fault with anything else of the plan. I think it's an ingenious solution, the dual entry off of different streets, and clearly the spaces in it are an improvement over what is there now, so.
Motion still holds? Motion second? All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's it for our public hearings. Next up, reports and recommendations. We'll have a Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan update, I believe, from Commissioner Lee. You guys have been working on this about eight months now? Nine months?
Yes, it is a nine-month process.
Nine-month process.
Yes, so my fellow commissioners, I'm pleased to provide an update on the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan. I have previously made this presentation to the city council, so I think I can probably expedite it a bit, since you're all very up-to-date on sort of how this thing came about. But I did want to say that it is probably the second area that was identified by the city council to undergo further study. So in some ways, we took to task this, besides creating the plan, to look at the overall process, and see if there's some way that we could kind of come up with a process that could be a template, per se, to use in a future, should a future study need to be done in another area. So let me just go through some of the steps. I think it's important to kind of review how we got there. Our project timeline, again, in nine months, and I think, I'm pleased to say, we're still on schedule. So the city initially held a public kickoff meeting in June. It was well-attended by over 75 residents and business owners. Shortly thereafter, we identified resident and business owners to join the small-area planning team. Once we selected the team in July, they were able to participate and select the consultant team, and participate in the interview process. Quickly, in August and September, we worked to develop, come up with a work plan, and focus on sort of the community engagement piece. Clearly, our planning team felt that that was a big focus of it, and wanted to get as much input from stakeholders. We held three public input meetings, or the community engagement meetings, one each month, from October, November, and December, and after that, we are just coming out of the point where we've kind of gathered all the data, and have been looking at sort of the areas that we want to focus on in this report, and what form that should take. So now, we are entering what we're calling the review period. We just received a draft copy. The small-area planning team will be taking a look at that and providing comments back to our consultants, and we hope to be before you later on this month for an actual open meeting to review and receive your comments, and likewise, in March, going before the city council to get their input. So again, what are some of the benefits of the small-area plan? Obviously, the reason for us doing it would be to gain an understanding, a better understanding of the exact neighborhood issues and concerns for that particular area. The point of it is to establish a future vision, which is based on community stakeholder input. From that, the plan will become a roadmap to achieve this unified vision, and within it, we will have additional land-use regulations and additional information to guide future development that goes beyond the basic comprehensive plan. So it is seen as a complement to the comprehensive plan. It does not, however, guarantee when, where, or what kinds of changes will occur. It is not intended to force current businesses or residences to change or to relocate. There is no plan to provide funding for new projects or amenities, and it does not mandate building design. One of the first questions that comes up whenever we embark on this process will be why now? In our particular case, it was strictly driven by the age of the infrastructure. This area was developed primarily in the 50s and the 60s, and it's clear that we're likely to receive development proposals in the near future. So this was our chance to be proactive, address the issue now, and hopefully get good input from residents and business owners who are currently there. A small-area plan will have to tie closely to the comprehensive plan, the relationship is that we will use the same planned topics. So in any small-area plans, obviously, we're going to focus on the things that are particular to our area, and the green arrows here denote the areas that we will be providing additional information on. So you will see more information on the vision, goals, and objectives for the Wooddale Valley View area, a neighborhood profile, further information and recommendations on land-use and community design, and an update, and some analysis of the transportation and economic vitality elements that need to be focused on. The small-area plan process is done in three phases, and we pretty much followed this, so I've already talked about sort of some of the startup activities we did. We're just coming out of the planning process, and that is probably the most critical portion, as that's where we actually generate the information. Out of that, I'd have to say that the community engagement was about 50% or more of the success factor in the quality of the data that we would achieve from the entire planning. With a good community engagement process, it would become, therefore, easier to synthesize the data and draft the plan based on the fact that- the data and draft the plan based on, um, the fact that stakeholders had been well-engaged and also that all input was solicited. So we're now moving into the plan approval stage, and at this point, we will be putting, uh, the plan before the public, up on the website for input, and again, we will be coming before the commission and, and the council to get specific input as well. Just wanted to review just a few of the roles. This is obviously a process still in development, and we were very fortunate to have great, um, collaboration from our city staff. So Karen Kurt, Carrie Teague, and Lindy Crawford really provided, uh, a great framework for us to work within. So by setting a schedule, making it clear among all of our participants what the intent was, what our goals are, we were able to, to go through this process, and, and as we have been, we've also been tweaking it. So I would have to say that the roles become very important for each step of the process, and what those roles are is the part that we have been closely monitoring, looking at, and trying to fine-tune as we continue on, uh, through the process. Our planning team was made up of volunteer residents and business members. We had six residents and two business members, and they were invaluable, probably, in, in some cases, the most important contribution they made was to champion the project within the area and assist, uh, with some of the meeting, uh, details. Many of them took leadership roles in our actual outreach programs, and by their connections meant some of them were on their neighborhood associations. We were able to sort of extend that outreach through them. So to have that, in some ways, was a, a much more effective way of gathering more input and, I think, sort of a shared, um, buy-in of, of the process as well as the, the final product. I truly believe that this is something everyone's going to feel strong ownership for. Our consultant team was unique in that they were four individuals, experts each in their own right. They were interdici- interdisciplinary, and because of that, I think that's the reason they beat out several other teams that, um, came before us during the review process and the selection process. However, all of them have a community-based approach. They all bring public and private sector experience, and they all stressed a walkable neighborhood design, which for us was critical in this area, which is, uh, central, smack in the middle of a residential area. So the small area planning team was very much in agreement that that was a, a key focus that they wanted our consultant team to have. In addition, they brought with them a, a market research component, which again, because of some of the, uh, retail and business areas in their, um, businesses in the area, there is that question about what does the future hold? The Wooddale Valley View area obviously is basically the intersection of Wooddale and Valley View roads. However, in defining the borders, which our consultants ultimately, um, enabled us to do, it was to look at everything sort of, uh, around that intersection. So you may be familiar with the fact that the northwest corner is that shopping plaza with the Wally's Gas Station, and then each of the four corners are anchored by some type of office or business, um, use. And beyond that, most of the residential areas are to the west, east, and north of this area, with the sou- southern portion actually having some wetlands areas and some It is roughly 11 acres in size, so probably one of the smallest, uh, small area plans we will do for the city. The land uses, as I mentioned, had kind of a nice diverse, diversity to it, although at this point, it, there is a sort of a sense that it's in transition. Um, and again, like I mentioned, that it is, it has hea- a heavily residential component. So now I'm getting into a little bit of what you'll probably see in the draft report, but I just wanted to cover, uh, the, this beginning basis, which is gonna serve as the foundation of the report. Our consultants identified these organizing principles for us, and all of the recommendations, and ultimately, the plan itself is gonna have this as the underlying, uh, framework. So I'm just gonna run through here, this real quickly. Um, these are the elements that, or the principles that they identified. Uh, place, that the study area should be recognizable as a place and visually attractive. Gathering, there should be a place for people to spend leisure time, whether it is a commercial or a public facility. There should be neighborhood businesses, and they, these businesses should provide goods or services desired in the neighborhood, including small offices. The amount and the configuration of the commercial space should be allowed to adjust in response to the market. So likewise, housing, these sites should also be allowed to transition over to housing from businesses, from business use in response to the changing market demands. Height and size of buildings shall be from one to three stories, depending on their location relative to single-family housing, and that they would employ graceful transitions from the single-family neighborhoods into the commercial district. Parking, most residential parking should be in attached garages or underground. Street edges, buildings should be located near the street sidewalk without intervening parking. There should be trees between the curb and sidewalk. This one, uh, essentially was a goal to try to get away from open areas that are simply surface parking lots. Circulation and connections, walking, bicycling, or trying to, um, access public transportation in this study, study area should be safe, easily accessible, well-lit, and, um, the area should be well-linked to the nearby neighborhoods, the ones who would be using it the most. Moving forward, we have our target dates that should finish out the small area plan and result in the actual documents. So today, I'm before you, uh, for the planning commission update. Um, in the next two weeks, going into February, we will be posting the draft online for public comment and collecting those comments. Then somewhere around the second week of, of February, we will be collating the comments and obviously passing this along to our consultant team to incorporate or revise and edit. Um, by the end of February, we hope to have the draft in hand, um, distributed to everyone on the planning commission and the city council, so that we would be coming back to the planning commission the end of February, and hopefully by early March, um, the city council and an adoption and, um, if, essentially amendment to our comp plan. So at this point, I can answer any questions.
Commissioner here.
Just a curiosity question. When you were reviewing the members of the team that represented both businesses and , uh, citizenry, uh, how many of those team members live in the immediate neighborhood?
Are you saying out of the business side or just the, uh, entire team?
Entire team.
That's a good question, um...
I, I knew several names, and they don't live in the immediate neighborhood to me, and I just wondered if we had representatives from that group.
Uh, they, all the resident members were from the immediate area. Now, the, out of the business owners, I think, uh, one of them may not be actually living in the area, but has...
Oh, I'm pleased to hear that all the residents were. That's wonderful.
Yes, yes. All the residents were. Yes, definitely on that.
There were postcards mailed to everybody in the Concord and Pamela Park neighborhoods, so it, so all the homeowners there then had the opportunity to come forward if they wanted to participate.
Commissioner Hobbs.
I, I apologize if I'm supposed to know this already, but how do we define a small area? Do we have a definition for how, what a small area is?
You know, this particular area was already identified in the comprehensive plan as a potential area of change. Likewise, if you know, 70th and Cahill, that little plaza, is also identified in the comprehensive plan, and many have been saying that might be the next small area plan we do. Um, how they're identified, I, I don't know that there's a formal definition aside from how we, uh, identified some of these areas like Grandview in, in the comp plan.
Yeah.
Um, we're calling it a small area plan. Uh, I think that's sort of just typical planning lingo, but, uh, aside from that.
There isn't any statutory definition for what a small area plan is. The comprehensive plan suggested in, in what should've been called the areas of potential change, not potential areas of change, that there would be a process that guided the evolution, and because we had, uh, an ability to frame it in a way that wasn't statutory, we defined, I think, in the comprehensive plan that we would be pursuing something that became known as a small area plan process.
In this particular case, how did the consultant figure out where to draw, or all of us figure out where to draw the line?
In some ways, it was already defined by the zoning, uh, commercial, um, office, so, uh, that started it, and then I believe we may have added a few properties and are trying to actually classify it as a neighborhood node.
Mm-hmm.
Um, almost a new classification. That might, might be one of the recommendations in the report. The reason being is that it's getting a little difficult now to define office or commercial when there's this live-work component.
Right.
So it was to be a little more, uh, flexible in, in opening up the possibilities for the future as to what might go there.
Yeah.
So we are defining some of those borders right now, but of course, I don't think that that's ever to exclude some other properties on the fringes, but in this particular case, it's pretty cut and dried. I mean, right away, you get into residential, so...
Yeah, I'm just thinking too, from the businesses standpoint, obviously, they transcend zoning lines and how these different nodes of businesses and what they are attract different clientele from what we define as the neighborhood or the small area.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
That was part of the team's process too, was to fine-tune the, um, the map. So that's why we started out with that oval. This is the general area we're looking at, and there are a number of multifamily units there as well, the apartment buildings on the south side of the street. So it's kind of how it all works together and how that, uh, intersection, that area can stay vibrant, I guess is one word, uh, going forward. Um, yeah, it was, it was in, a really interesting process. I personally wanna say that publicly, that our team has been phenomenal. They've really come forward, they've taken ownership of the process, they're invested in it. They've, as, as Susan said, they championed it to the neighborhoods and to the neighbors. When this started out, at our first, uh, public, um, workshop, there was skepticism, there was suspicion, because why now? What's going on? What is, you have plans, don't you? The city's going to change things. And trying to convince people of, no, 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 that's not happening, that's something that the team, I think, helped foster, it's kinda like, it's okay, guys. So it's nice having that participation, and also, uh, just in reviewing the draft pla- uh, plan, their, their comments, their contributing, it's been a, a very talented and, um, helpful group of people.
Well, I'll say, great work. I mean, this is very impressive, and, and thanks for everyone's time, particularly. Commissioner Lee and Forrest and city staff, and I know, uh, there's been, uh, staff has, has put together some basis for this, and I'm assuming, Karen, you're updating that as you go for the, uh, the guidelines for that and what you've learned along the way, but this is very impressive, and, uh, thanks for, again, for everyone's help, and hopefully gets us something going forward as well as, as any of these other ones that we come back with and, and wanna study as also. So thanks for that. Look forward to the, to the plan in a couple weeks, about a month here, month and a half, so that's, that's great. So thank you. So next up is, uh, correspondence and petitions. I believe in your packet, I know I have the attendance sheet. I don't know if I saw the council update. I don't know if Carrie, if you have any updates for that, and the, uh, it was, by the way, it was the first one of our, of our, uh, attendance sheets, so you're either zero or 100 on there right now. Some of us are 100, some are zero. Batting average, yeah, so hope, hope everyone gets better on that. Um, was there anything on the council updates, Carrie, that came up, or was that in the packet? Maybe I missed it.
I don't believe it did get in.
Okay, well, we can...
I can update during my comments.
Okay. Uh, next up is chair and commission comments. Are there any comments from the commission? Great update on Valley View Wooddale.
Oh, we received some email cor- well, correspondence as well, so...
Carrie's gonna address that, I think.
Okay, great, I just...
Yeah. I just have a couple comments. Reminder, just that, uh, applications for the city right now are ongoing for the city boards and the commissions. Again, we have three open spots on the planning commission, so those of you who wish to apply, I believe it's to the end of the month, right, or is it Friday? I think it's the last day. Yeah, and then after that, the, um, interviews will be the second week in February. I think those are all, at least the general block times are set up right now. Looking forward to that, three nights of that. And then, uh, also wanted to, uh, update on Living Streets, public input. There's two upcoming public input forums on the Living Streets, uh, guidelines being looked at with the city right now. The first is February 4th from 7:00 to 8:30 at the, uh, Public Works Building, and then February 7th from 10:00 to 11:30 at the Adina Senior Center. So it'll be a chance for people to look at the plan, uh, take, uh, bring any comment forth as that works through the system. I believe, uh, big picture on that, that wants to come to council, I believe, yet this spring. So hopefully you get some input on that, and then coming into, uh, planning commission and council. Yes, Jackie?
It's going on February 7th, AM, 10 to 11:30.
Did I say PM?
No.
Oh, okay, it's AM.
I just wanna...
Didn't say, yeah, it's 10 to 11:30 in the morning, yep. Any other comments? Commissioner Carr.
I can't recall the last time we looked at the 2015 work plan, but Carrie, was your plan to bring that up, um, at the next meeting perhaps? That might be a good introduction for the new members to understand where we're headed, the projects that we have.
Yes, I think, I think the new members would actually be at the second February meeting, some, will be at the March meeting they'd be at.
As soon as they're seated, we will invite them right away.
Yeah, so I think they'd probably meet the, catch the, uh, I'm not trying to get rid of you. It's sad.
It's gonna be all...
But, so I believe they'd be at the, for, for the, uh, first, or excuse me, the second February meeting, correct? So maybe at that time, we could bring that back, and, uh, I know some of the things we need to discuss, and maybe Carrie can bring it up here in a couple minutes too, is just on, uh, South Dale Study and some of the things on there that we need to get going for our 2015 plan also.
Okay, thanks.
So I think you're down to one meeting? Maybe two? Maybe two. We'll have to have cookies, right? With that, Carrie, do you have any staff comments?
Uh, sure, just to update, a couple of items that are before the council and have been before the council. Update on the 7200, uh, France project. The council authorized staff to bring back to their next meeting, which is next Tuesday, findings for denial of the comprehensive plan amendment and the, the preliminary rezoning. I know there was some conversation in the community about the applicant revising the plans and coming back, but there's no change to the plan, so it's, um, what will be before the council next week is a, a resolution for denial based on their, on their recommendation to bring that, uh, to have staff bring that back to them.
So just to comment on that, so last week, the, the council made a motion to deny the approval, right? Is that...
They made a motion to approve the fail.
Okay, motion to approve that failed, so I just, maybe, Carrie, if you could just explain that to everyone, why it, 'cause I think a lot of people thought it was done at that point.
Yeah, the, uh, the motion to approve failed on a three-to-two vote. They needed four votes because of the comprehensive plan amendment, but that's not taking final action on the project. As you know, by state statute, we have to take an action and provide findings, um, on a decision. By February 3rd is the deadline, and so after that failed motion, the council authorized staff, or, you know, made a motion for staff to bring back findings for denial of both the comprehensive plan and...
So, so you ended up redrafting the resolution?
Yes, the resolution that was before them that evening was for approval, so they didn't have the denial resolutions in front of them at that time.
Okay.
So they were...
Yes.
Can you just tell me what happened if we didn't do that?
If we didn't do...
If we didn't do that, the project would become automatically approved, and all of the conditions that were crafted contemplating approval would go away. There would be no conditions.
Correct.
Because the city didn't.
Because the city didn't take action.
Take action on it during that approval time.
That's right.
Can you say, is there a possibility, though, since this second vote, that this second vote could actually be different from the first vote?
There's always a possibility. That would be a difficult one. If the vote were to change, there wouldn't be findings in front of them for approval. If it looks like it's going that way, we would likely have to ask the applicant to give an extension to that timeframe, to the 120-day rule. They can extend a week, two weeks, two years. They can waive it all together. In the event of that happening, that would probably be the way it would play out.
And the applicant would ask for an extension on that same proposal, for the housing proposal?
Yes.
There's a lot of ifs involved here, so.
Yeah, a lot of ifs.
Procedurally, then, are the comp plan amendment and the project approval, are they tied together then in their consideration, or are they two separate motions, votes?
They're two separate, two separate actions. So there would be a resolution regarding the comprehensive plan and a separate resolution regarding the rezoning. So the comprehensive plan would take place first. So if that's denied, the rezoning wouldn't be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so that essentially has to be denied as well. But it would be two separate, two separate actions.
Typically, though, I mean, when we bring things forward, staff isn't preparing, you know, rationale and findings for approval and denial at the same time. So does this mean it opens up pretty much every other vote on a comprehensive plan matter to be unfinished until everybody agrees on the findings? And, I mean, I think the public is kind of hanging, and they'd like to know what's going on, so.
Well, it's really, it's the same as it was back in December when they were considering a resolution for appro, well, actually, the first resolution that was before them was for denial, because that was your recommendation. And so they made a motion for staff to come back with findings for approval.
They asked them to change that.
So they, when they're taking action, they need to adopt a resolution that includes findings and conditions, whether it's on either side.
And I believe the builder, just to close the loop, has stated that if this isn't approved one way or the other, regardless of the process, that they will then proceed with building the medical facility that requires no variances.
That's correct. So that could be before the planning commission within the next few months.
Something to look forward to, huh? Any other comments? I know we had one email here. I don't know if you want to touch on quick, Carrie?
Yeah, one additional item is the tree ordinance that you've all been working on so hard all these last several months, but that's on the agenda for the council on February 3rd as well, at least for first reading. Maybe they've waived second reading, but that is on the agenda for February 3rd. And then we did hand out an email that staff received earlier this week from a member of the Energy and Environment Commission. There is an ordinance there attached to it regarding some suggested language in regard to our landscaping ordinance, landscaping and screening requirements primarily for commercial development, really a separate issue from the tree ordinance that's before the city council next week. This is an item that's on our work plan, as something that we've wanted to tackle. This has been on our work plan.
I think it was on there last year, too.
It was on there last year, yeah. It's, so it is something that we want to take a look at here within the year. We would certainly use this as we move forward with the consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment. So I wanted to make it aware, make you aware of it, that this work has been done by the Energy and Environment Commission, and we will certainly take it under consideration as we move forward with this kind of ordinance change.
One last thing, as far as the Southdale area. The city is currently doing a study on utilities there, correct?
Correct.
Do you have a.
Transportation.
Transportation and literally sewer capacity and items like that, right? When is, when is that due, or when is that anticipated to be done?
That is on the engineering work plan for this year. What I've been thinking is maybe we want to piggyback on the work that they're doing, where we introduce a land use element to it, where we in particular examine that west side of France and what kind of densities can be, can be supported there, both under the existing comprehensive plan, maxing out development, and then considering a residential component, because the comprehensive plan does allow for housing on that west side. So we could include what kind of densities could be supported on that side.
Yeah, I think that'd be a very good idea. How would we get that authorized? Would that be something the staff could do, or is that something council would have to give a recommendation? Because I'm assuming it's going to cost money, right?
It is. What I was thinking, you know, we do have the Seventieth and Cahill on our work plan for small area plan. Maybe that could be shifted, those monies that were allocated for that could be shifted to this, where we can piggyback on that work and it becomes a more substantial plan. That would be something that you could recommend to the city council as a change to your work plan.
Yeah, I think that's where my head's kind of at, is that I think there's much more potentially going on in Southdale and many more questions there necessarily than that need to be answered soon and later, much, potentially for much more density, or much more development in that area versus Cahill in particular.
Yeah, I can tell you, just in day-to-day, I get a lot more inquiries in the Southdale area compared to Seventieth and Cahill, which is zero in probably the last.
So that kind of answers that question, doesn't it? So do we need to make forth a motion or something, or what, is that something we could do now, or is that something you would have to put together?
I could draft up the change to the work plan, and we could have it on our next agenda.
Okay. How's that sound for everyone?
Let's do that.
Is that, any comments? I mean, does that, seems like we need to push that sooner than later. Okay.
I agree. I've been looking for some way to expedite that, whether it was, you know, I know we did the greater Southdale area study, but that's 10 years old now, too. So something ahead of just simply waiting for the next round of comp plan review. So whatever we can get to help us make better decisions here on the bench.
I think another, maybe rough data point would be also with the visioning process, right? I believe the, getting some raw information back on that right now.
That's right.
Not exactly, but I mean, another.
Yeah, that kind of lays the groundwork as we move into the comprehensive plan, the big.
So I think both of these will give, and especially if we, the Southdale piece would really be helpful for the next comprehensive plan also.
I just want to say, it makes it really difficult to take informed, knowledgeable, logical steps on any proposal in that Southdale area, because it's just coming so fast and furious. So I would be really grateful to have something like that. I think in some ways, it's very difficult to go, to decide anything other than the comp plan right now without further information. So that will be a real help.
Sounds good. Any other comments? Well, with that, I'd take a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second. Great, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.